I would want to go to Harvard right now. Or G W M.
Columbia.
Or Columbia or Brown.
Well, I know that when I was offered to go to Yale, I said, you know. That's so. Well, yeah, I barely got into James South Community College.
I'd like to reconvene the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will begin with Dr. Smith's update.
Oh, my goodness. Uh-oh, we'll have to look over there, that TV's not on. Wait, there's certainly more than us TVs to look at. So I want to start with, um, two Fridays ago, last, last Friday, on April twenty-sixth, a really fantastic event took place and, um, it was coordinated, um, in a tri-county way, but certainly, uh, Dr. Marr and Dr. Marr's office took a, took a lead to, uh, do the Southern Maryland Summit Teacher Preparation Pipeline at the University System of Maryland, Southern Maryland, affectionately known as USMSM, where we gathered, uh, the, the three counties, Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's, the three superintendents, Dr. Navarro, uh, Dr. Townsall, and myself, the Blueprint Implementation Coordinators, um, from each one of the counties, as well as a host of, um, representatives, everybody from, uh, uh, the, the associations to HR directors, to our, our, our teacher for the Teacher Academy of Maryland, we'll talk a little bit more about Melissa Chu in just a second. We all gathered together with all of our higher education partners, so those under the University System of Maryland umbrella, as well as some outside of that University System of Maryland, um, umbrella, and the Maryland State Department of Education. So in one very large gathered space, we had all of the true players for building the next generation of educational leaders. Um, and it was a great productive day because we are in an, uh, uh, an evolutionary time when it comes to how will we inspire people to become teachers? Because there's a lot, there's a lot working against us when we're talking about drawing people to the educational profession. There's a lot, there's a lot of just chatter, there's a lot of chaos, there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of disinformation, and at the end of it, it takes people who may have considered becoming a teacher and kind of nudges them in a different direction. And what we've got to do is we've got to figure out how to cut through all of that and really present ourselves in the Southern Maryland region particularly, St. Mary's in particular, but in the Charles, Calvert, and St. Mary's area, and, and really market ourselves to this is where you want to come and spend your, your professional career interacting with children. And so this pipeline was all about it. So, uh, we have a lot of resources, uh, about the event and the date itself. Um, so if you go to our website and when you're in the scroll, there's Blueprint. When you click on that, it takes you to a site and one of the tabs on the site is just the Southern Maryland Summit, where all the materials, all the presentations, uh, all the information is there. So if you, so for those who didn't attend, it's great, it's a resource. We're, uh, video's been put together that's, that's, that's pretty informative. Um, we're still polishing a little bit of it and we'll be putting that out, uh, before the end of this month to kind of intrigue people and draw them in. This is the start of our work and it was a great start. So thank you to all who participated. Um, and these are some great pictures of people presenting. Uh, Dr. Navarro started us off with a great compelling where we are right now. And if it didn't chill people in the audience, then, you know, they're polar. Uh, it was, it was, we have, we have an unprecedented need facing us for the next generation of teachers. Um, I got to serve on a great panel, uh, and then, uh, at the end, um, Dr. Townsall kind of closed us all off and throughout the day, leaders talked about how best to pull together. Uh, All County Honors Jazz Band Concert, uh, it was fantastic. Of all the concerts, um, I, they're all, they're all, they're all just really, really, really great nights, but jazz in particular because it is so predicated on kids interpreting and expressing th- themselves through music, uh, it was a lot of fun and, um, we had, uh, a great, great representation a- at all levels, but in the far corner, you see the back of Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker always does something really cool with the elementary kids and this year they did a jazz version of Metallica's Enter Sandman and it was great. So, you know, I'm just saying, really, really, really cool evenings. Um, the musical season is over. I hope you had an opportunity to see The Drowsy Chaperone or Finding Nemo or James and the Giant Peach or Frozen across our four middle schools or at the high schools, Guys and Dolls, The Lightning Thief, the twenty-fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. Um, man, there's a lot of really great talent on stage. Uh, and, uh, to all of our parents who made sure that their children were there night after night after night after night after night after night after night and had the rehearsing, not only of the dialogue, but of the singing. Thank you, parents, for sharing your kids with us. Um, to all of the staff who, uh, spent thousands of hours making sure that every little thing was just right from stage to lighting to set design to costuming. Um, it is a bringing together of all of these people and it was a, it was a great. I'm a, I'm going to put it down as one of the very best musical seasons, spring musical seasons that the county has had. They were really, really, really great. Um, Captain Walter Francis Duke, we recognize them here, but then they traveled up to, uh, Maryland State Department of Education where they were recognized before the board and the governor showed up as well as a, as a veteran and as somebody who really understands the sacrifice that those who serve and their families, um, he was there to give warm words as well. So there is our Captain Walter Francis Duke being recognized by the board. Uh, we had the SMECO Outstanding Teacher Awards, uh, up, up at, uh, the Waldorf J.C.'s. They had a great dinner, uh, it was really wonderful. Uh, we had our, our math, our science, and our, uh, CTE teacher. They were also recognized last night at our, uh, event as well, where we recognize all of our Teachers of the Year and the nominees and Education Support Professionals of the Year. Last week, we had the TAPS Night, so that is, uh, Teacher Academy Potential Scholars. So this is where our kids that are in High School TAM go into and as they're working with elementary aged kids and middle school aged kids, they identify students who seem to have that true spark, who really like to, like to work with other kids, like to extend lessons, and we are telling them that they really should consider going into the role of a teacher. And so we invite all the parents to come out and we talk a lot about what it means to be a teacher and the pathway to become a teacher and how the school system is building support structures all the way through. And what we're hoping is that by the time we get done with all of our work for building the pipeline, these elementary age children will rise right through. They'll go from TAPS to mentored to TAM to then an apprentice program to ultimately becoming fully licensed and, uh, becoming tenured teachers with St. Mary's County Public Schools. But, uh, Melissa, Melissa Chu and Jamie, Jamison Coombs, um, they're the leaders of it as well. And our Teacher of the Year, Lauren Runkles, who gave a beautiful speech last night, was also there to, uh, encourage people to go into the profession because the best recruiters are the people who are the doers. Doers are recruiters and, uh, she definitely did a great job there. So our staff recognition, the first large event, we have students next week, is already up. It's already posted. You can go to our YouTube channel and watch it. I have to tell you that every single year, the speeches that are given by those who are award winners are, they're, they're just great. They tell their stories and it is their stories that I think will draw more and more people to us. And, um, of all of, they were all fantastic, but, but, um, Machine Anne, uh, at Leonardtown Middle School, talking about just what makes us special and that it's a thirty, uh, thirty-six years or however long she's been in the system and all of the lifelong relationships and friends that she's had as she's spent her time. But then she finished with the, the children after they've graduated from the very highest achieving, going off to attend Yale, to the ones that found employment regionally, who recognize her and, and reinforce that, you know, how much, how important she was when they were going through the program. Um, again, that's exactly why people become teachers. So the budget process, uh, we are, ba-dunk, 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 ba-dunk. La- yesterday, the county commissioners had their work session that followed the public budget hearing. Um, it went really well. We were asked a couple of questions. We had fantastic, we had Ms. McCourt there to answer questions and Ms. Kim Howe there to answer questions related to the CIP. They have, uh, canceled the next budget work session and, um, because we believe we're, we believe that we're, we're in good stead. We have, we have a, we have all of the, all of the things to have a budget, a balanced budget across the street and we will bring forth and on the twenty-second for your, um, ultimately review and action, a final balanced budget for two thousand and twenty-five. That includes all of the great work that we've done this year to recognize our teachers and our support professionals as well as our administrators. So, um, budget process and then in June eleventh, we're assigned sealed and delivered. Uh, and that will be, I think that's also the last day for teachers, so we'll get to end in a wonderful way, um, a very, very, uh, productive year. And here we are, um, tonight we have the Rotary Dinner Appreciation Dinner. Thank you for the Leonardtown and Lexington Park Rotary for hosting. Another thing, another way in which our community says thank you. Leadership Maryland's coming down as they do every single year. So that's all the leaders from across Maryland. Uh, they come down here to find out what's going on in public education and we love the opportunity to tell them exactly what's really going on in public education. And so that'll be, that'll be a great day. We have the Becca Scholarship Awards, uh, tomorrow evening at USMSM. Friday is an early dismissal. Monday, please, everybody come to school and work on Monday. Come to school and work on Monday. We recognize that the fourteenth, students, you do have it off, it is an election day, but really be there on Monday, especially you seniors. Do not have that be, you know, one of those days, all right? Be there on Monday, be there or be square. Uh, on the fifteenth, we have the student, uh, recognition ceremony, similar to the recognition ceremony that we had at Chopticon High School. The, the student one is at Leonardtown High School. Um, and then we have the sixteenth and the seventeenth. Seventeenth, I think, is the last day for seniors. As we gather together the next week, they do all of the things they need to get ready as they finalize and then they do all their awards and all their, until the twenty-fourth. And then we have a holiday Memorial Day weekend, which is awesome. And then we come back on Tuesday and then, ah, the payoff. Uh, commencement, Chopticon High School on the twenty-ninth, commencement, Leonardtown High School on the thirtieth, and Great Mills High School to finish us off on Friday, the thirty-first, the last day of May. I want to thank the board, um, for your continued support of all the great work that's going on in St. Mary's Public Schools and, and you are gathering together one heck of a laurel and we'll get to this end of the month and then you are to rest on that laurel for a little bit because it has been a good year of good work. So.
I have one thing.
Okay.
Chopticon High School undefeated softball team, smack champions last night. It was a late game, it didn't start till seven-thirty. They beat Northern ten to four, so.
They're smack.
Keep going.
Going on.
Finish the job that the two thousand and twenty-two team didn't.
Go on.
Let's go.
Well, that's a good deal because I have a lot of, I have a lot of Chopticon swag and I promise I am not going to show up to a game without wearing my Chopticon swag.
And I don't, I don't know if you can go to the state game if they make it that far. If you're like, little jinx.
Well, I didn't ha- I didn't have the gear on when I showed up, so that might have been the, yeah.
We also, we also have post-traumatic stress disorder from that game, so anyway. But anyway, thank, congratulations to the, to those ladies. Um, they have just been absolutely killing it on the, on the field all, all season, so.
Definitely shook.
So they start the state run, I think, Friday maybe, I'm not sure. So, but congrats to them.
Awesome.
So, all right, we have two recognitions this morning. We have School Nurse Day with Ms. Long.
Yes, and keep celebrating our folks.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good morning. Today is, uh, National School Nurse Day and with me today, I have two of our school nurses that I'm going to invite up. Um, we have, uh, Ms. Penny Michaels, School Nurse at Spring Ridge Middle School and Ms. Hannah Pratt's at Oakville Elementary School. Today, it is essential that we recognize the importance and perseverance of our school nurses. Throughout daily operations, the School Health Services Team is oftentimes found to be working in the background, but they are an important part of our educational team, bridging the gap between health, wellness, and learning and are always prepared to respond to student needs. This school year, the nurses have completed over one hundred and forty thousand visits. And it's not over yet as they care for the health and well-being of our students with their compassion and expertise. They provide guidance to families and connect them to resources. Our school nurses are a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers. They continually promote health and wellness and make a positive difference in the lives of SMCPS students and families. Thank you, Nurse Michaels and Nurse Pratt's, for being here today to represent all St. Mary's County Public School Nurses. And I extend my sincerest gratitude and appreciation for all of our nurses today in our schools and as well as recognizing Ms. Kathy Allen for your nursing service as well. Dr. Smith, if you want to come up and join me, we have a resolution.
Yes, we do.
We do. It's a nice, small print.
Thank you for being here. Whereas, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, has been designated the School Nurse Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools and whereas, school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and in ensuring students' academic success for more than one hundred and twenty years. And whereas, school nurses are professional nurses who advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement of all students by providing a critical safety net for our children. And whereas, school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, family, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health conditions and outcomes for our children. And whereas, school nurses are members of school-based teams providing care coordination to address the student population. And whereas, school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved, as the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes, May eighth as School Nurse Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools and that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance. Signed this day by the Board of Education. I think we're going to take a picture unless you'd like to say something. No, okay.
Now we have pupil personnel worker. Uh, we, do we have another resolution?
We do.
Maybe we'll just stay up.
Proclamation.
Yes. Um, yeah, it's a proclamation this time. Okay, it is my, um, privilege to recognize our and express our appreciation for our pupil personnel workers today, so I am going to invite up three of our pupil personnel workers who are joining us this morning. Um, our PPWs work within our schools to support and eliminate barriers for students and families, such as those living in poverty, challenged by homelessness, experiencing mental health challenges, trauma, and living in foster care. Through their dedication and expertise in addressing diverse needs, they create opportunities for students to reach their full potential. This work would not be possible without the help of our school personnel and equally important, our community partners. So this morning, we have, uh, Ms. Kim McGallicott, supporting Chopticon High School and Benjamin Banaker Elementary, Ms. Elizabeth Foot, our PPW and court liaison, supporting Town Creek Elementary School, Chesapeake Public Charter School, Fairlead, and the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And we have Ms. Dana Randall, supporting Park Hall Elementary School and Spring Ridge Middle School. We asked administrators of those schools to share a few words of appreciation on their behalf and I will now share them with you. Ms. McGallicott goes above and beyond what is asked of her. Her communication with the administration and willingness to take on tasks should be commended. She does a wonderful job of approaching people with genuine sincerity, compassion, and support. She monitors and addresses students who are chronically absent. She supports some of our less fortunate students and she does home visits for students as needed. Our staff and students and families are lucky to have her. Ms. Foot is truly an invaluable resource to the school community, the juvenile justice system, and all community partners. Her expertise and dedication make her the go-to person for anything from building support to community outreach. Ms. Foot's vast network of contacts ensures that she always knows just who to call to get things done. As the ultimate team player, she consistently goes above and beyond to work for the benefit of students and families. Her willingness to share her knowledge and insights has a positive impact on everyone around her, making them better professionals and individuals. And Ms. Randall goes above and beyond to support our families and students. She is incredibly knowledgeable, connects families with resources, helps families secure housing and food, and visits homes as needed. She is a champion for our students and families and works hard to remove barriers so that all of our students can attend school and access their education. In recognition of all of our PPWs and the important work they do, Dr. Smith, make your way back and this time we have a proclamation.
Yes.
Um, from the governor.
This is really, uh, this is very, very small. Okay, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I mean, it is a beautiful proclamation. Whereas, Maryland is proud to recognize pupil personnel workers for serving all of the children of all of the people promoting the opportunities for every child to experience a safe and healthy environment. And whereas, pupil personnel workers are specialists, trained to consider and assess the needs of the total child and serve as the school's liaison with the family, community organizations, and social agencies to foster the child's physical, psychological, and intellectual growth. And whereas, pupil personnel workers work collaboratively with the resources of the home, school, and community essential to the good mental, emotional, and physical health of each child necessary to advance effective teaching, learning, and achievement in schools. And whereas, it is important that the people of Maryland honor the unique and essential role that pupil personnel workers play in the personal and academic development of Maryland's children. These dedicated professionals do an outstanding job nurturing the growth, maturity, and responsibility that adulthood and good citizenship require. Now, therefore, he, Wes Moore, Governor of the State of Maryland, does hereby proclaim May two thousand and twenty-four as Pupil Personnel Worker Month in Maryland and urges all citizens to join in celebrating this special observance. It's a lovely proclamation. All right, thank you. Unless any of you want to speak? I always offer. Of course, of course.
Okay, we have no public hearing. Do we have any public comment? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, personnel, administrative and supervisory, and personnel teachers. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have two action items. The first one is Ms. Layona with the stadium concession stand replacement at Leonardtown High School.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today for the stadium concession stand replacement at Leonardtown High School. Um, the request is to approve the, uh, award, a contract in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty to Dennis Anderson Construction and fifty thousand dollars for contingency uh, to construct a new thirteen thousand, one thousand three hundred eighty-one-story stadium concession outbuilding, which will include, um, the concession stand and restrooms. A little bit of background of, um, the existing conditions. I included a picture there to show you the little building where the concession currently stands. Um, it's, it's only, um, concession. There is no true restroom there. Uh, when we offer, um, events on our stadium, it's very challenging for this particular school because it only has limited restrooms that are exterior in, uh, adjacent to the building. And, um, I, I believe it's only two partitions and it makes it really challenging when you offer an event and, you know, a home team comes, uh, a visitor team comes in the bus and they all want to stop at the restroom before they start their event. Uh, I've seen it, I experienced it, and it's not only that, but also for the people visiting and watching the spectators. It's, it's difficult. So we've always known that there was a need, um, that we pair that with the need that this building is, the existing building is a nineteen seventy-eight building, uh, needs replacement anyway. So why not just replace it completely and make a new, combined, like every other, uh, high school that has it? So with this new building, we'll be all equal now. Um, it, I, I mark an X, I don't know if you see it in the drawing. That's exactly where we're going to build the new facility. For several reasons, um, I will keep the other one operating while I build the new estate, uh, facility and I'm a little bit closer to where the connections of water are because we're adding all these bathrooms. Um, and it will be used for a variety of, um, events, you know? Arts and sports and graduations and all the things that we do are at our, uh, stadiums. I added a drawing of what we will be doing. It's basically two gang bathrooms for, uh, men and women. We will be adding, um, an unisex bathroom for families or, and then we will have our concession with our appropriate storage, um, area. Um, we will add outdoor fountain, wa- water fountain too and a nice, um, uh, utility room, um, janitor's closet. Um, nothing special, just a one-story building to give us the service that we need. Um, we will start as soon as we approve this contract. Um, there is some lead time on materials, but we're working towards. Um, we're hoping to have substantial completion by September twentieth and, uh, in preliminary conversations with the contractor, um, there might be some challenges with the roof to get it on time by September twentieth, but what we're trying to do is start all the dirty job now, excavator, wrap it around and then, um, since the others' concession will still be working, then I, I, I'm not in a stress to put it into. I want to build it right. I wanted to build it with the right materials so that we, we can last longer. Um, we are providing, this, this project is going to, we're going to do a facade in brick to match the school brick and then we're going to add, uh, blue roof metal. That, that way, we don't have to change the shingles in, you know, twenty years. And so it, it makes a big difference when we build commercially institutional buildings this way. Uh, procurement method was done, uh, with our multi-step procurement. We invited, uh, firms to pre-qualify, uh, we analyzed them in the technical qualifications. We do a pass fail that we, if they pass, then we invite them to, uh, submit a lowest, uh, price proposal. We posted, uh, pre-qualifications on March twenty-sixth, uh, on e-Maryland Marketplace. We, uh, received eight contractors submitted, uh, technical proposals. Out of all those eight, four were invited, uh, to participate in a bid proposal. And those four submitted on April twenty-ninth, um, the selection that we're recommending. The selection that we're recommending is Dennis Anderson. They've had experience with us. They are very well-known here in Southern Maryland and Charles. They do a lot of work for us, too. And they're locally located. As a matter of fact, all of them were locally in Southern Maryland. Financial summary I included there, so you understand where the funds are coming and what funds we had available. The lowest bidder for the base bid was Dennis Anderson, and that's exactly what we are going to award today. It's a base bid. We had included two, three different alternates. One was a canopy extending the area for service. Another alternate was a teen room. And another alternate was to include some refrigerators for the concession. Unfortunately, with the price came higher than we expected, we were not able to pick any of those alternates. But to be honest, the need is for the concession and the restroom. The other things were a wish that I always add. If we have more funds, we can add more stuff. But this will make the school compliance and equity with all the others. And at this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
Any questions?
Understanding, you know, it's a small space, 18...
1,380, yes.
Right. So you don't have the economies of scale. And I was very surprised in the cost per square foot. I mean, it's, I think it was $680 per square foot, which set off a bunch of alarm bells for me. So I was looking at the competitive bids, and they're all reasonably close, within 10%. So I don't have a real argument in terms of the cost estimates. I do have in the design. I'm wondering why we have to spend close to a million dollars on a relatively small building. Is, are there alternatives in design, value engineering, of having a steel stud with maybe metal cladding as opposed to masonry, CMU, masonry construction? I understand that you want to have the design to blend into the, to the, to the design of the, of the school. But I was wondering if you've taken any look at maybe alternate designs to get this price down?
So we already had a conversation with the lowest bidder to try to see if we could do some value engineering and maybe get some savings on this project. And if we get any savings, we'll put it back into any of the alternates that we picked, too. I, the only reason why I hesitated to change the materials is commercially, CMU is the way to go. Especially in a building like this that it's exterior, and it's going to be used for exterior. It's going to be used for events when we are not there, you know? It's not only used by our students and staff. It's used by the community. So you really want to put something that will last longer. And this is not the place where I would like to cut costs on materials, just to save some funds. Does that make sense? The only, I would say, extra that I really advocated was the metal roof. And I don't think shingles should go in schools anyway. So being a smaller building, adding metal makes sense. It's not much that we're going to break the bank. I do know that there are other jurisdictions that we're, that are currently doing studies to change field houses, and they're budgeting 1.6 right now. So the fact that ours is under a million, I feel confident and I feel comfortable. It's just that right now, we just can't estimate anymore. This one was based out of square footage when we started this project, designing it. It was a deferred project since FY '22. And we started with, I don't know, less than $200,000. Quickly went to $400,000. We thought it was going to be 700, and look. I mean, it's very difficult to budget anything these days.
Well, I recall, you know, where we put in new turf in the three schools. And my, my thought was, after asking a couple of questions, that the depreciation on those three schools, about a million dollars a year, that buys a lot of grass seed. And while, they're beautiful, you know, the, 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 the system that you put in is absolutely gorgeous. I just wonder if we can afford it. That's why I'm asking if there's a way to value engineer this building. Yes, it would be nice to have a brick facade, but I think we could live with something less cheaper. That's all I have.
And the only, the only other thing that I interject with is that this will make Leonardtown match Great Mills and Chopticon that have brick buildings, that have restroom facilities, and the concessions all built in so that they'll all have similar structured features, which is the reason why, you know, we are replacing the press box at Great Mills. It's finished. It will do a ribbon cutting on so that there is equity across all three of the schools. And as far as turf fields, that is the new standard of high schools in the state of Maryland. And although there is depreciation built into it, the season-to-season available use consistency of playing platform and the exceptional, I mean, we now have a state champion for soccer. And, and one could argue that the playing on a turf field, practicing on a turf field, and then going away and competing on definitely may have enhanced play enough, because what would happen? And we've been, we had been to states multiple times, and when we got up to that turf field and somebody, I mean, that was really, that was a difference maker. And, and I think that so often, we find ourselves figuring out a way to put less money into education. While at the same time, we're figuring out a way to spend more money on a shopping mall, a street, the lighting for the this thing and that. And, and I come back to, if what matters most is the future and our children, that's where you should be putting your time, effort, and treasure. And so for this, I, you know, I, somebody who's spent 34 years with Leonardtown High School and has worked around that concession stand and had family and friends queue up for the one bathroom that gets a little challenging after 2,500 people have been using it. You know, this is, I appreciate, I appreciate always figuring out a way to maximize our money. But I also recognize that, you know, the county is investing in eight or nine artificial turf fields, and the cost was very similar. And so, you know, this is, this has been the whole budget process where, where everybody was talking about how the school system can cut costs. And yet, we are only 43% of the budget, 57% of the, of all the, is, and no one else was asked how they're going to cut costs. And I think that when you talk about how you can cut costs, talk about how you can cut costs in, in government and the military and the whatever. And, and it should be a conversation about all things together and not just constantly, you know, how can the school system figure out a way to pinch a penny and move forward? Same thing with, with starting teacher salaries. We're having this argument about teacher salaries, and we're competing with the government, which is offering six-figure salaries, compressed work weeks, and, and actually reducing the expectation of degrees for programming. It's a, it's a really challenging time to be in education, and I, and I just, so I apologize for the soapbox.
Yeah, we're on, we're on concessions.
Yes, I understand. This is, this is, I, you know, we've been, we've been really trying to figure out for the longest time how to, how to put together and bundle the money to get to this. And, and this is a project that you approved in the fall, when we thought it would be $700,000. And then it comes back at almost a million, and it's not because we put anything more into it or ask for anything. I mean, the extravagance of a metal roof, oh.
Yeah, it's really block and concrete. There's nothing else in there. Nothing fancy, nothing.
Mrs. Andrews, do you have anything?
So the difference, is it in the budget already?
So we had $750,000 in the budget this year. So I was fortunate enough to work with the Department of Finance that was able to find some utility savings, give it to us, so that we can fund completely this project as a base bid instead of having to go back to the drawing board, pay more to the architect, to come back with every design and then put it out again with not that many savings, because...
I don't know what we would have done to, I mean, we can't make the...
So your answer is yes?
The only thing that I would...
Your answer is yes. It is, it is, it is in the budget.
It is in the budget.
So we, there's no additional money. There's...
This existing money.
This is all permitted.
2024 money.
2024 money.
Money, money on the table that we have.
Yeah, I have it already.
All right, we are, we are way off book here, so. Kathy or Mary?
The only thing which I say, if I had to go back to the drawing board, would be eliminate the one single bathroom. But do I want to do that on 2024? No.
Right, but we're not, but the volume of people...
Right.
First of all, the volume of students that we have at Leonardtown to begin with, it's the largest high school, right? And then the volume of people that then come to watch those sports teams, right? I mean, be there at a track meet, right? And Kathy's going to chime in on this, but, you know, be there at a track meet. So it is, it is definitely needed, so. Kathy, Mary, do you have anything?
Go ahead.
This is the right thing to do to bring Leonardtown up to par with Great Mills and Chopticon. And that's one of the responsibilities of the Board, to have equity among facilities and programs at the individual schools. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I appreciate it. And I know the people at Leonardtown, the students and the community who participate and are spectators for those games will appreciate it, especially the bathrooms, because it's a long walk currently from the field to the building. And that's not a good thing. It's not good for anybody's health either, so thank you.
The, the design is, is great. My question about the family restroom, will there be a changing table?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Having, having worked in the concession for smack meets, where, you know, you've got multiple schools, multiple kids, and having to use, walk up the hill to the two-stall bathroom, stand in a lengthy line, and then experience what happens when lots and lots of people use a bathroom. Not pleasant. Very much appreciate this. Also appreciate the fact that what you're, what you've done with this design is make sure that it will last for the future. So we're not having to go back in and paint metal cladding on the, you know, as it rusts or as it gets chipped or whatever. And so sometimes it's penny-wise and pound foolish. I think this is the best way to go. It is unfortunate that the, that the costs have gone up, but it is not unique to us. And this is, this is a conversation that has been going on, I know, with, with, with Mrs. Howe and the IAC. This is, this is a challenge. So thank you for bringing this forward and for working to make sure that we have a better facility so that, so that the students and the community will have what they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award to Dennis Anderson Construction in the amount of $921,750 and a construction contingency in the amount of $50,000 to construct a new 1,380-square-foot, one-story stadium concession outbuilding at Leonardtown High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion. Thank you very much. We have secondary math curriculum adoption, Mrs. Dunbar. Okay, have to, are my readers as well?
Exactly.
Good mor, good morning, members of the Board. My name is Bridgette Dunbar, and I'm here to present to you information about the secondary math textbook adoption. I wanted to start by sharing some historical perspective. In 2007, there was a K-12 math adoption that was aligned to the Maryland voluntary state curriculum. In 2010, the Common Core was adopted by MSD-E. The Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards were adopted by MSD-E in 2013. In 2017, St. Mary's County Public Schools engaged in another K-12 math adoption aligned to the new Maryland standards. The approved adoption was for six years. In order to help overcome pandemic challenges, secondary math was able to use as her funds to purchase the DESMO's curriculum as a supplemental resource in 2021. And now here we are in school year '24, and as our six-year adoption has come to an end. Our highest priority as we sought out curriculum for review was that it made the measure as a high-quality instructional material. To do this, we looked at the components of the MSD-E curriculum vetting rubric. For this adoption, we evaluated resources based on these five components: focus and rigor, coherence, instructional supports, assessment, and equity and accessibility. Our adoption process began in August as I was tasked to identify highly-rated resources. To choose vendors, I looked at Ed Reports ratings, strong recommendations from the math community, successful use by other districts, and the, and SMCPS use of these resources. Vendors were submitted to DOI for approval. In October, I organized a curriculum adoption committee that included parents, school-based administrators, middle and high school teachers, IRTs, coaches, and special population staff. I also adapted the MSD-E curriculum vetting rubric to include criteria related to parent access and strengths-based instruction. As part of this initial work, I also sent surveys to Algebra III, Precalculus, and AP Statistics teachers about their curriculum needs and renewing subscriptions, as well as updating to newer editions of their current texts. From November 2023 to April 2024, I convened the curriculum committee first to orient the team to the process and familiarize them with the rubric. Then the adoption committee met six more times for vendor presentations, review of the ratings and comments synthesis document, and to make the final recommendation. I submitted the recommendation to the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, the Deputy Superintendent and Superintendent for review and consideration. Materials were delivered to the three libraries for review from April 8th through April 23rd with no public comment. This included tangible materials for review, but also a link to a website with further detail. I will first be sharing information with you about the Grade 6 through Algebra II selection of Amplify DESMO's Math. Amplify DESMO's Math provides a structured approach to problem-based learning. The curriculum thoughtfully combines conceptual understanding, fluency, and application. Real-time student thinking is made visible. This resource provides blended learning with both an online component and print-based material. I want to note here in this image that you can see a sixth grade, that sixth-grade students are asked to draw a vehicle that can fit in the tunnel given a scale and an inequality. When students click "Try It," the vehicle is actually shown driving across the road and under the tunnel if they've done it correctly. When students click Try It, the vehicle is actually shown driving across the road and under the tunnel, if they've done it correctly. They get immediate feedback of whether they were correct. With this adoption, we've asked for digital access for eight years along with consumables for three years. Each lesson comes with print resources as well as practice problems. The practice problems are available in both print and online. We will also be provided a mini lessons item bank for Grade Six through Eight, personalized practice, and a fluency practice extension. The assessments provided also come with detailed performance and standards reporting. In the digital platform, students are able to express themselves in a variety of ways, as you can see in the image below. They can respond via equation editor, text, graphs, sketches, tables, and multiple choice items, among other things. Students can also upload a picture of their written work or respond via voice recording. In two thousand twenty-three, student wrote over ten million words within these lessons. When students enter math within this platform, they often receive immediate feedback via animations of the math. That one thing I was gonna say on that slide. It's important to note that some of these response methods mimic what students um are asked to do on standardized assessment. Students have to digitally write mathematical expressions and equations, they have to respond via text response, and uh there is a sketch tool also embedded in the M cap assessment so that they can draw their thinking.
So, all the feedback comes from the teacher, the actual computer?
Both.
Okay, both.
Mm-hmm. For teachers, there's easy, easy-to-follow instructional guidance, assessments and reporting, facilitation tools, guidance on what to look for and how to respond, and every lesson has both print and digital materials. Within the digital platform, teachers can pace their students, they can pause their students, they can see what is happening in real time. They can also provide lesson feedback. So, to your point, when teachers are implementing these lessons, it's, it's meant to have a discussion. Students do the, complete the math work on the slides and the teachers might pause and say, let's look at what this person wrote. Let's talk about it. How does this connect to what we're doing in the lesson? So, it's a facilitated digital lesson. Accessibility within the program includes differentiation support, support for multilingual learners, text-to-speech, beginning-of-the-year diagnostic screeners, and pre-unit checks. So, in this view, you can see students have the ability to turn um the language i- into Spanish themselves for multilingual learners. Students also have the ability to turn their, their text-to-speech feature on so they can hear it. Students also have the ability to increase font size, so for visually impaired students. Additionally, the curriculum is fully editable. The digital lessons are edit, ed, I was gonna say edible, editable, as well as the print material in both English and Spanish. So, teachers can edit the digital lessons, teachers can also edit the print material. Here, I'll share a little bit from two teacher quotes. One teacher shared that it's the best curriculum that they've used so far over the last thirteen years. This teacher also shared that the visuals are not able to be recreated outside of this curriculum. This teacher also loves the mixture of computer-based and paper options this curriculum includes. A second teacher shared that they really appreciate all that Desmos offers, particularly for students who speak other languages. This teacher shared that Desmos works well for their students and they enjoy using the platform. Here, I'll share a little bit from two committee member quotes. One member recognized that this platform is familiar to students and has a strong student-centered application. This member also talked about the parent perspective and appreciated the summaries and family guides that are in both English and Spanish. This member also talked about the pairing of the consumables with the digital resource. A second committee member shared that Desmos Math is their first choice because it's engaging for students. It includes readiness checks and spiral review in the practice problems. This committee member also appreciated the vocabulary, family resources, and alignment to our standards. The Amplify Des- Desmos Math curriculum incorporates meaningful use of the Desmos calculators that also happen to be embedded within the M cap assessments. MSDE has shared that students should be taught how to use the Desmos calculators. The Desmos graphing calculator is also embedded on the new digital PSAT and SAT. The lessons allow for explicit practice of typing math notation and writing use, writing using math text online. Now, I will be sharing information about our Precalculus and AP Statistics purchase. These are, these are renewal or refresh of current text, uh textbooks. The Sullivan Precalculus text was part of our adoption six years ago. The current subscription to My Math Lab, which is the online component, will expire at the end of this year. So, we, we are asking to refresh this online subscription for another six years. This is a newer edition, so we are also purchasing teachers additions for this newer version of the text. With My Math Lab, students also get digital a- uh access to the digital textbook. For the practice of statistics, um for our AP Statistics course, we're asking for class sets of the newest edition of the same text we're currently using. We're also asking for six years of online access of this e-text. The online access includes practice problems, video, resources, et cetera. We're also asking for teachers addition of this newer edition of the text. The cost of each of these resources are uh are outlined on this slide. Amplify Desmos Math would come with eight years of digital access and three years of consumable for Grade Six through Algebra Two. The Practice of Statistics would come with classroom sets of the newest edition along with six years of digital access and teachers additions. Sullivan Precalculus would come with six years of digital access along with teachers additions of the newest edition of the textbook. Pending board approval, professional development is planned for school year two thousand twenty-five. The recommended professional development from Amplify Desmos Math involves a menu, menu of coaching options. These options include, but are not limited to, classroom observations, debrief observations, model lesson, model lessons, PLC or grade-level planning meeting facilitation, data analysis, and leadership consultation. This is beyond their, their launch professional development that they provide um for free with, with um an adoption. The recommendation, the recommended action is that the board approve the adoption of the math curriculum and related materials as presented. I'm open for questions.
Mr. Davis?
I have no questions.
Um, on the consumables, uh is it like a standard amount of books that you receive for the um students? Every student gets one, correct?
Gets one, mm-hmm.
So, screen time in a class in a day, how long are they actually on the screen?
So, this curriculum, this, well, this curriculum actually, not only do they provide digital lessons, they provide completely offline lessons. And then with the print materials, teachers can decide whether they wanna do the lesson online or they want to do it in a print version. So, the teachers can choose and, and the resource makes recommendations. Like, think about that one slide where the kids get to draw the vehicle that's gonna make it under the tunnel or not. There's some lessons that you just wanna do digitally because, you know, it brings math to life and we can't do that with a print resource. So, we are, you know, we, we do want a meaningful balance of digital and print.
Cause you know, hands-on is always.
Hundred percent. I am, I'm a hands-on girl, like Algebra tiles, we do, we do all those sorts of things. So, just finding that right balance is, is what we're working towards.
So, on the budget, is it already in the two thousand twenty-five budget?
It's in this.
Yes, this was, this was, this is a twenty twenty-four.
We're still.
Oh, this is twenty twenty-four from that budget. Okay, okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, Mary?
Uh, no questions. This was a very thorough uh presentation and it is really high-tech what's going on. It uh includes a variety of learning styles that students may have and it gives the teacher options and students' options on what meets the individual needs of the student. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I appreciate that you um left the materials um in the back so that um I, I came in yesterday and was able to flip through them. Um, I, I liked the, especially in the teacher's addition, the, the suggestions made to the teacher and how to draw out the lessons and so forth. I also really love the fact that they are working on rolling out a, a parent portal. Um, I think one of the frustrations many parents express is that um they don't understand the math that their students are asking them for help with. Um, for a variety of reasons, it's not the way they learned and, and um that can be frustrating between a parent and child when the child is saying, that's not what I learned at school today. That's not the way they showed us how to do it. I don't remember. Help me. Um, I think that parent portal will make a world of difference in helping parents to be able to help their children. Um, so very much appreciate that and thank you for bringing this forward.
The, the parent on the committee had, the, the parent portal of the materials for parents coming from the resource are already, that's great. But the parent on the committee had, like, was, was very in tune to giving me feedback on what would the needs be, be for parents, so um definitely that got my wheels turning, yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's like that, it, oh, it's like that middle school years where you realize that you can't help your kids with their math homework anymore, so the parent portal there is very helpful.
Well, you could draw the, you could draw the vehicle and watch it go through the tunnel.
Exactly, right. But um I do appreciate all of the, actually, I endorse, I appreciate your point, but I do, I, there is a definite component that our students need to have online because everything that they do in college will be online. So, from that, you know, to get them comfortable with that and even to go through the SATs and the PSATs, all of that is, you know, you know, unfortunately going online now, so um, you know, I think ha- having them be familiar with it, you know, in a classroom setting and, you know, for, for, for long periods of time, i.e. through school, I think will hopefully make them more comfortable once they, you know, sit for those SATs.
And the M cap as well.
Right.
That way, they can purely focus on the material and showing what they know rather than.
Well, and it's familiar to them. If they have to solve a problem like, you know, draw a thing and have it go through a tunnel, at least, you know, they've seen it before. So, in a more comfortable setting rather than the stress of an exam, so.
But um also, I was more concerned with the sixth through the eighth grade. Cause you want them to still be.
Right, hundred percent, yes.
Teacher and that. The other thing I liked when I came, I came in also yesterday and um I liked for the shy person, it has a little question, how do you feel? Uh, did you learn the material? You know, that little smiley face and that. If somebody's shy, you know, they might be honest enough to put maybe, you know, the frown and that teacher will be alerted, oh, maybe this person needs, this student needs a little extra time. I thought that was really a good addition to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the award of the contract to purchase the following. Amplify Desmos Math and corresponding instructional material from Amplify Education, Inc. for adoption of the secondary math curriculum for Grade Six through Algebra Two at a cost of one million seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred forty dollars. The Practice of Statistics by Bedford, Freeman, and Worth for the newest edition of our current text, classroom textbooks, and digital access for AP Statistics at a cost of fifty-two thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents. Sullivan Precalculus by Savas for the newest edition of our current text, digital access for Algebra III and Precalculus at a cost of eighty thousand, three hundred six dollars and ten cents. Further, that the Board of Education approve additional purchases of instructional materials and professional development from Amplify Education, Inc., Savas, Savas, and Bedford, Freeman, and Worth to support this math curriculum adoption as necessary and as funding permits.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have one informational item today. It is our April financial report. Ms. McCourt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the April financial report before you for revenues. Uh, we have two hundred and sixty point two million dollars year-to-date received, balance of twenty-four point six million dollars year-to-date representing ninety-one point three four percent. A particular note is our interest income significantly exceeding budget. Those monies will be rolled forward for use in your FY twenty-five budget. And Mrs. Andrews um addressing the planned math textbook purchase. The four point three million dollars that you see as the planned use of fund balance that incorporated a carryover from our fiscal year twenty-three budget into FY twenty-four budget, uh adopted budget for purposes of the purchase of the textbooks. And that has been what we've historically been doing, so they use the entire fiscal year to evaluate it and then it's brought forward in the month of May for final purchase.
Thank you.
And on the expenditure side, you can actually see within the instructional textbooks and supplies an encumbrance of two point one million dollars, so that incorporates the one point eight million dollar action that you just took. And then on the expenditure side for the bottom line, we have total expenditures. Uh, encumbrance is outstanding of seventy-one point seven million dollars. Year-to-date encumbrance is an expenditure, so two hundred and seventy-one point four million dollars, a remaining balance of thirteen point four million dollars. So, year-to-date at ninety-five point two nine percent spent or encumbered as of the end of year. Are there any questions?
Anyone?
No questions.
Um, I, I got a, I got a suggestion to make it more efficient for me at my end for the ledger with the transfers. Can we add the column, the program that it comes from? The program number? Yes. I can give you an example. We have the category. I mean, I could give you an example, but you know how like, well, you, you know how like payroll, they all have like, some of them are seven one oh two, seven one oh nine. But sometimes different programs have that same number, like just for example, salary.
So, all the salary accounts are seventy-one?
Well, the program is that three-digit number underneath the cat. That will help me know exactly.
So, the program numbers.
Cause I'm trying to get familiar with the budget, so it's just gonna help me know where that money was actually moved from because sometimes one category has the same number but in different programs. Does that make sense?
It does. Um, so the program numbers differentiate between, for example, math versus art versus science at a high school. So, we may actually be shifting salaries from one program to another because of um the, the hired amount for one program versus another, so.
Okay, so if I have that list, then I would be able to adjust the program numbers, what they mean.
We can certainly provide that.
Yeah, just, it takes me a long time to get through those couple pages going back and forth. I bugged you about it. Like, now I know how to add the number in that certain category.
Are you talking about on this page, this five or six? Okay, so keep in mind, these are just, so it's all within the same category.
Right, oh, I know that.
Okay, so, but we've, like, we approve it by category.
You're right.
So, i- if it has to move from one category to another.
Kathy looks stumped at what I'm saying. I know you understand kind of what I'm saying.
Well, I just, I just wanna make sure that, so, that if we, if we move from one category to another, then that's when it comes before the board and goes to the, you know, uh to the commissioners, right? So, so, so this is not, I don't want anyone to, to misinterpret what you're saying, so it's, we are, we are still, everything on this page is still within the required categories, right? You just want additional detail as to. You just want additional detail as to what is in underneath that category, specific to those accounts.
Because the program might help.
Right, right, okay.
And the reallocation within individual categories.
Right, I just, I just don't want anyone watching to misinterpret that, you know, that the document that you see is different from what we do publicly, that's all.
So, this is being provided to the board as a communication device?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But the authority to move within a category is under the purview of the superintendent.
Correct.
Yeah, but it helps me just to learn the budget more and get all the details.
And that's fine, I just don't want anyone to think that we're moving things within categories out of term. Okay, all right.
No, nothing to do with that.
It's all in the fact that one, one line within that category has savings that can be utilized in a different line in that same category.
But, so, for our part, the brief description, we can certainly include even more information there so you can totally, so for the first, so, reallocate funds to provide water for high school graduations there, right? So, that, yeah, so, but, so, if we put more information in the brief description too, that might be more useful than...
She did kind of do it, but she knew I was...
We can absolutely start doing that. We started doing it to identify individual departments, for example.
So, I mean, that's, that's one thing we can definitely lean into. And then, that would be not only useful for you, but this is a public-facing document, so anybody could then look at and they could see it as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. The next board meeting, Wednesday, May twenty-second, at five o'clock for executive session, and the open meeting will begin at six. And with that, we are adjourned.